Good evening, everybody. Hi. Philip. Who's Philip?
It might be Philip Mento.
Yeah. Could be. Came and he went. Okay. I tell you what, since we have a very large agenda, my ending time was totally off, so I've changed it on the what I'm gonna show, but let's call the meeting of the February Town Council to order. First order of business is to somewhere I have, there it is. It says to approve the agenda, so anyone wanna?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Occupator. Okay. So just a comment about the agenda as I told the council in in a in an email, the the business we really absolutely wanna get through is there are four RFPs that are being put to the council for approval to distribute and we wanna have our additional discussion, additional initial discussion about the ADU ordinance. The other things may or may may be deferable as time allows, but they're on the agenda where they are. And we'll just see how how well we do. So any anybody have anything else to say about the agenda? If not, all in favor of approving the agenda as shown?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brings us to a personal appearances. I know for a fact we have one. Meredith.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Good evening. John, I will not read the letter if you were able to circulate it to council.
I thought you did.
No.
I have not seen it.
All right, I let me take a moment and read it then. They did today to the mayor and council. Can you hear me okay? Good, okay. I attended my first RACIC meeting yesterday. Today, I'm wearing two hats, that of a sixty-five year resident of the town of Washington Grove and that of co-chair of the one fiftieth anniversary committee. I've had a good life here and creating a one fiftieth bonanza filled me with lots of positive energy. Yesterday, RACIC voted to send you a request to drop the name of MacArthur from MacArthur Hall. This idea stems from two concerns. First, that when he was young, Roy MacArthur engaged in minstrel show style musical entertainment, a genre which has been interpreted as mocking blacks. The committee also says he failed to remove or adjust racial property covenants inherited from founding fathers. Both these issues are clearly linked to the times and should not be used as an assault on a remarkable man. Before the vote, I said that this proposal should bring a mix of laughter and disdain in the community. Unnecessary character assassination of Roy MacArthur and also devaluates devalues the exceptional work of his son Don and defames all family members, especially those that live among us. RACIC confronted the race issue last issue with resolution two oh two three dot dash oh one. This new proposal could have addressed been addressed there, but it seems this group wanted to stoke a fire. The small volunteer group that met yesterday was composed of ten members, only six of whom are town residents. I feel that they are interpreting this incorrectly and making some personal attacks. I recommend viewing Phil Edwards Montgomery history tomorrow at two P M. On the town for a well researched perspective on the town and you can also view it the week following. I'm also strongly recommending that the council drop the proposal when it arrives. The update I have from today is Phil Edwards is writing a narrative on the subject to be completed by your next meeting in March. So that's all I have. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. I just wanna make an initial comment that, you know, Meredith's addressing something that happened perfectly, you know, in public in a in a meeting here in town. The the council is is has not received, nor have I, anything from racing addressing the issue Meredith's concerned about. So my suggestion is that we take her comments in keep her comments in mind. And when this arrives and indeed is is the council has a opportunity to address it, then we can discuss the the some of the things that Meredith has raised respecting her view of the proposal.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, Meredith. Okay. Anybody else? People are joining the meeting left and right here. Okay, in that case, we'll close the public appearances and we will go on to the treasures report, January's report. Jean is here to add color to another one. Black and white. Report. So Jane?
Yeah, so you can hear me, right? Okay. Again, I have the comments here. I do wanna point out, you'll see a big jump in the first two income line items and the comment future receipts will be lower, as most of you know, property taxes. Most of us pay a second installment by the end of December and there's a month lag before I receive that money. So we got a six digit check, not check, money in the bank, a direct deposit for real property taxes in January. But that's when we get the big chunk. We don't get like a twelfth every month. As it comes in, they give it to us a month later. So there'll be dribs and drabs coming in for the balance of the fiscal year is my only comment. Don't expect that percentages to continue on that trajectory. So I did wanna point that out. All the other comments I always keep from previous months. John, if you just wanna scroll through, if anybody has any particular items they have a question about or don't understand. I don't know, do we wanna talk at all? In the expenses? Next page. Down the stormwater projects, just as a reminder. We have what's called deferred revenue. It's money we got from the federal government to cover this. We got it up front. We were not allowed to consider it revenue when we got the big chunk of money. As we spend it, we're allowed to kind of, if you wanna think of it as reimbursing ourselves from that pot of restricted money. So as we incur expenses, which to date have been almost thirteen thousand, the fact that there is no budget there, it should not be any kind of alarm bells, but I wanted to periodically remind folks of how we handle that. Are there any questions before we move on on that?
Is that is that thirteen thousand consulting fees?
Yes, that's it's mostly sultans and then that little bit of repair work on chestnut. So if you go further down, you'll see big chunk in MacArthur and Hall. Maintenance, we did have that big sprinkler repair project that is hopefully finished. That is new from prior month. And there's really nothing more new as you go down. As you get on to the bottom there.
One other question, when you go back to trash, I thought that recycling was a little bit more than a trash collection. Is that not right?
Um, I have to go look at a bill.
I was just wondering why, yeah.
There's two different numbers and I'll have to go look at a bill to remember which number is which. So we based we based the 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 budget spread was based on what we anticipated it to be. Yeah.
Okay.
They're not too far different. They do bill separately for each on the bill.
Okay.
The only thing I will mention down at the very bottom where I put the bank balances, you'll see there in the MLGIP account, we segregate out the ARPA funds, the how much remains to be spent. So I have that there and you'll see a very large amount in the money market at PNC for four hundred and fifty-three thousand. I'm gonna be moving a large part of that out soon and putting it in MLGIP because the money market's only insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand. So you'll see a shift. I'll put it into the MLGIP because that is extremely secure money, which is why so much of our money is in there. But if anybody wondered why we have so much in the money market, that is where that six digit property tax payment went into. I mean, it really jumped it up, so I'll be moving that much this coming week. That's it.
Okay, anybody have questions for Jane on the treasure support? Motion to approve the treasure support, please.
This is Barbara, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Rob seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Report is accepted. Okay. Jane, you I thought it was appropriate for this meeting to review the budget preparation timeline. So and for committees and anyone requesting money for anything for the coming fiscal year.
Yeah, I looked at the sheet we prepared last year as far as trying to work on timing. And last year we held I held a Zoom meeting, just a brief meeting with key committee members, just to kinda go over what things to think about when they put a budget together and the timing of when we need it. I think some people found that helpful. So we can do that again. I was planning, John, I looked at our timing from last year. And if committees and work groups got their thoughts, written budgets, even if they're just in any format that they can get them to me by March third. That should put us in good planning.
Okay, so so that's she's Jane's referring to the initial budget numbers. The council will, yeah, I mean, anybody can submit a number, but of course, the council will take a look at it and you'll you'll want, everybody will clearly wanna justify whatever number. Everybody's familiar with that. It's just that we wanna be sure that all the committees are on the right timeline so that we able to do this.
Yeah, in looking at the March calendar, we generally provide a budget draft to council in the third week of March. Middle of March, third week of March, somewhere in there. I was thinking maybe March eighteenth and then have the council workshop on March twenty fifth. And then final council review on April eighth.
At the council meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jane's proposing March twenty fifth for the council budget session. Anybody have a significant objection to that?
No objections.
No objection. All right, so let's put 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 it for March twenty fifth.
Okay.
Good, and Jane, we need to send an email out to all the committee people, every commission to everybody.
Yeah.
In advance of your March third, just with a little a little review of how this will go.
Yep. Yeah, worked pretty well by Zoom last year.
Okay. Good. One last thing. And so we're going to get to the stormwater infrastructure maintenance RFP for which our intention was to spend all of the all of the ARPA funds, which we otherwise would have to give back. Jeans listed the four twenty five roughly of the of the awarded amount that remains. However, we have earned a lot of interest on that, those funds. And given the RFP and the work we're we're planning, when we get to that, I'm gonna suggest that we include, I mean, before I say that, we also have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state funds, which does not have to be spent by this year. It had some seven year period. I'd have to look to know exactly, but we still have multiple years, but we can certainly expend that money as well. So just keep in mind that we have the option of considering the earnings on the ARPA money for the purposes of the ARPA funds right now, but of course, it's just a bookkeeping issue. Right now, it's considered interest and is income, but but we may want, we may want to consider that as allocable for the projects that we're spending money on. And I don't know what that total is. Jean would have to.
I can work on a calculation while the rest of the meeting's going on.
Yeah, as for how much that adds to the four twenty five, but we also have the two fifty from the state, so. All right.
I can barely hear you. I'm hearing everybody else just fine and I'm wondering if you could move closer to your microphone? Yes, you.
Everybody else having trouble here? Seriously?
Yeah, I can hear everybody else fine, but you are, I can barely hear you.
Yeah, this is Patty, you're just a little muffled, John.
That has only been the case the last few meetings, is that correct? I just, nothing's different here. I mean, I'm sitting about as close as I always sit.
Sound good to me. I can hear you fine. You're you're lower than Christie.
Right now, it was you moved or did something, you're louder, but but Christine was right before.
Whatever it is, it's the way it is. Okay, I'll try and yell at the screen, no, a little more. All right. So in that case, we did we vote on accepting the treasures report?
Yes.
Okay, so we've accepted the treasures report. So we're going on to the mayor's my report. The kudos notably go to Steve Wirths, who stepped in to deal with rising water in the furnace room of the hall, which was noticed during an event in progress. It was on a Saturday, I think, possibly a Sunday. And because the fire, the the an alarm went off, apparently there's a water alarm in there. And Steve came when Kathy asked him to and he both got the alarm off and the water stopped coming in and also pumped out. So Steve is, you know, we owe him a lot to deal with that and not having to call somebody to come in. Naturally, all these things only happen on weekends as we all. Thank you to Steve. All right, the shared youth pathway report. Jay wrote up a summary from the committee, which described the the status of the bike way, the connector. As you all know, the status is now the M D T M C D O T is recommending a particular alignment for construction. They had funds in there for further engineering studies, but no funds for construction. So with with Sydney Katz's help, we went before the Transportation and Environment Committee of the council to advocate, Washington connector was put on their agenda, which was terrific thing to advocate that the funds be put into the F Y twenty five capital investment plan, capital improvement plan. And again, I explained the reasons why it should be. The M C D O T is perfectly amenable, I think, to doing that. Although they're pessimistic that all the ducks will be lined up to actually start the work in in fiscal twenty five. We I I I and others hope that that the permitting that will be required and the engineering will actually be accomplished sooner than their their usual timeline that they assign to these projects. So I don't know the actual status, I believe it's in there, but I'm checking. So we wanna try and get it in there, get it constructed, construction started as early as possible.
Right.
So that's where that is.
So I just wanna jump in. I wanna thank John, you, John, for your leadership in this. People who have been following it know that the county, at first, when this all started, you know, they were like, let's go, let's go. And at some point, it started slowing down and we were getting a lot of different reasons why and no point in going into all of it. But John really was very firm that, you know, we need to get this done, you can do it. We got Sydney Katz involved and so that's why we are where we are. If we had just waited for the county, we'd still be waiting. So thank you, John, for starting that leadership.
Well, it's a it takes it first getting into the budget and then also getting, you know, moving along the current work, so we'll see how well that works. I think we have a pretty good relationship going. It's hard to tell, you know, they have a lot of balls in the air with D O T, but we're going to keep pressing on this. Maybe they'll wanna get us out of their hair and we'll we'll use this as a way to do it. By by actually accelerating things. Okay, thank you, Barbara, for that. Next item, which is in Peter's report, actually, in the town council report, the, as most of everybody already knows, the dump, the ugly dumpster enclosure has been removed. It's been repaved. It's like it was never there. If we could get rid of all of the wires in the intersection, it would transform it. Never been on the possibility, but the dumpster's gone and the, just to remind the council, we are the plan is for our refuse and recycling company to pick up weekly from behind the commercial corner building there refuse and recycling. The post office has none. They are, they they do not, they have to deal with their own trash because, of course, it's 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 private. It has a lot of personal information, so it's just that the businesses. And we started doing that a week or two ago and hopefully that will work and 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 they will be assessed a fee, just like all of us are dwelling tax fee. We'll call it for this service starting in with the next fiscal year, which will be in the new contract, which we're gonna talk about. We're putting out the RFP hopefully after tonight. Okay, deer management report, that's in the Woods Committee, just bringing it out here because it's something we we have to act on every year. It goes on, there were ten deer harvested this season. Thank you, Patty, for managing the the deer hunting program and you know, letting everyone know when when the hunters are present and what the results on a daily basis. So yeah, so you might say only ten were harvested, but that's been roughly the number plus or minus over the years of the program. First year, maybe had fourteen or something. Okay. Um, next item is unfortunately, Jeff McCrea has felt his 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 time was drawing him away and so he has resigned from the Historic Preservation Commission a couple of weeks ago. So the Historic Preservation Commission needs a new member. So let's beat the bushes. The general mantra on on our commissions is, you know, it'd be great to get someone who's, you know, a younger commissioner. The fact is that turns out from past experience, those with the most time are are not the younger members of the of the community, but so anyone at all would be good. So please see what you what what you think. If you think of anyone who possibly could be could be asked and persuaded, let me know or let Bob Boer know, the chair of HPC. All right. What are the information for everyone? The Washington Grove is now a member of the National League of Cities. That they have a significant fee to to join, but the Maryland Municipal League has has initiated a program where small towns throughout Has initiated a program where small towns throughout, throughout the state are. They are supporting membership in the National League of Cities. Most of the issues in the National League of Cities. Revolve around, you know, municipal services that we may not be, be offering. That go beyond our, our government operations, but they do impinge on things like, they do act on things like. Communications, they have CC regulations and the like, so. We really, we do stand to benefit by being able to have a voice. And in the National League of Cities, so. We're now, I think we're called auxiliary, not sure what the. Title is, but basically we're members, you know, there, I've been getting a lot of stuff encouraging us to participate in there. In their. You know, planning sessions, which they often have here in Washington, of course, because that's where. A lot of the National League of Cities activity is. Right.